Third meeting, a regular meeting of the town council. If you would, if you would like to rise and join us in the Pledge of the Flag, and if I could have Life Scout George Schwartz lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Would you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, announcements, upcoming council meeting, meetings, they are all regular meetings that are upcoming. Thursday, July fourteenth at seven PM, Thursday, August eighteenth at seven PM, Thursday, September eighth at seven PM, and Thursday, September twenty-second at seven PM, all here in the Matthew Thornton Meeting Room. Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Parks and Rec Department at Abbey Griffin Park every Wednesday night will hold a summer concert. This year's concert series began last night and will run through August seventeenth. Each week's concerts will feature a variety of musical performances, including oldies, swing, rhythm and blues, classic rock, and more to fill the air. Bring your family, friends, blankets and chairs, and enjoy a free night of entertainment each week. For a complete list of performers, please visit Parks and Recreation website at www. Merrimack Parks with an S and rec, R-E-C dot org. And I do have to say, I drove into the parking lot last night because I forgot something in my office, and people were walking down with coolers, pizza, blankets, chairs, and the event was well attended. It was the library and Parks and Rec kickoff to the summer concert series. We're just about a week and a half away from this year's Fourth of July celebration. On Sunday, July third, we'll be featuring the Merrimack Concerts Association for their annual patriotic concert at Abbey Griffin Park between the hours of six thirty and eight PM. On Monday, July fourth, the Merrimack Roadrunners Booster Club will be holding their annual Sparkler five K road race, which will begin at eight AM at Merrimack High School. Between the hours of eight and eleven on the Fourth of July, the Merrimack Rotary is bringing back the annual pancake breakfast at Merrimack High School. The Rotary typically runs a family fun day of music and activities during the afternoon, but those events will not be occurring this year. It's just the pancake breakfast. The annual Fourth of July Parade will kick off at the Common Shopping Plaza on Daniel Webster Highway at one PM. Merrimack typically has one of the largest Independence Day parades in the state. The deadline to enter a float into the parade is Thursday, June thirtieth. The parade features a wide range of bands, militia units, clowns, local businesses, community organizations, and much, much more. Participating can be as easy as putting a decoration on a bicycle or on your vehicle or just riding along, or it can highly be a decorated float. It's a great way to show your patriotism and get out some free advertising for your business or organizations at the same time. If you want more information about the parade, please visit www. Merrimack Parks with an S and rec dot org. The annual Fourth of July fireworks display will begin at nine PM at Merrimack High School, and we'll have a DJ Darren Roy playing music in front of high school from seven to nine PM. So come early and get a good seat. The library's summer reading program kicked off last night with a concert at Abbey Griffin Park. Check out the library's website for upcoming events for all ages. Read with us this summer, register online or in person, read and log your reading, and you'll be entered to win great books and prizes. That's all I have for announcements.
Comments from the press and public? If you'd like to address the council on upcoming agenda items, you can step to the mic over here or sit here. Seen no one coming? We'll move on. There's no recognitions this evening, no appointments, no public hearings. Updates from our representative delegation, if anybody's here? Did we get anything? Nothing? I didn't. In my email? Bear with me just a moment.
You didn't see it? It came in this afternoon.
Yeah, I did not. Okay. All right. Update from Rosemary Rung, as you sent, Representative Rosemary Rung. Let me just make sure this is what she wants me to read here. Okay. As you are aware, House session has winded down considerably, and I thank Representative Mooney for keeping you updated on bills impacting Merrimack. Two of three bills I filed are awaiting the governor's signature. House Bill eleven eighty-five is the one Sarita Croce helped with immensely. That's our wastewater director. And it will allow municipalities like Merrimack to regulate the amount of PFAS from commercial and industrial sources entering the wastewater treatment plant. Towns can fine offenders and keep the fines in their own budgets. The second bill, House Bill ten sixty-six mandates Department of Environmental Services to develop a strategic response to cyanobacteria blooms, provides thirty thousand dollars for initial research, and establishes an advisory committee of key stakeholders to engage with the Department of Environmental Services. It was not mid-June before two New Hampshire surface water bodies supplying public water experienced toxic blooms, and the municipal slash state ability to respond effectively has room for improvement. Merrimack's lakes have also suffered blooms, and the scientific expectation is blooms will worsen moving forward. Now is the time for DES to address remediation and mitigation strategies. Additionally, I would like to get input from you and town staff on legislation you would like pursued. As a member of the House Municipal and County Government Committee, I am in a good position to advocate for the town's interests. Please let me know the best avenue to get input, if it should be on the town council agenda, or through an individual phone call. I am also pursuing a meeting with Tim Thompson to learn more about some of the key issues we anticipate in the next term. Thanks in advance, Rosemary Rung, New Hampshire State Representative, Merrimack Hillsborough twenty-one. All right. If there's nothing further, and thanks for pointing that out for me, Tom. Town Manager Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. New Hampshire DOT Turnpike Division will be performing drainage work on Greeley Street in August. The project will repair and replace drainage pipe and structures at the bottom of Greeley Street on the west side of Daniel Webster Highway near the Common Man Restaurant. Work is expected to begin in August and be completed by September. The work will occur at night and will require shifting both lanes of traffic to one side of the concrete island and then the other side. As work schedule is finalized, notices will be published through the town's webpage, social media presence, to help alert residents and businesses of the work. Work will be accomplished by Busby Construction of Atkinson, New Hampshire. Naticklick Emergency Drainage Repair. The replacement of three hundred and eighty feet of the drainage pipe and three precast concrete structures have been completed on Naticklick Road between Westborne Drive and Lansum Drive. The paving contract is anticipating to complete the paving next week. Please see the town's website or Public Works Facebook page for pictures of the work and updates of the work schedule. The town of Merrimack submitted the two million dollar state ARPA grant application to NHDS on the June seventeenth, on June seventeenth for the Phase Five upgrade. The amendment application to add the Phase Five project to the current loan is required to be submitted no later than June thirtieth. A drainage improvement project for Gale Road is currently being advertised. The project will replace approximately eight hundred feet of failing drainage pipe, add or replace fourteen catch basins, install two hundred feet of underdrained pipe to lower the groundwater under the road, and repave about sixteen hundred linear feet of Gale Road. Bids will be opened publicly on July fourteenth, and the project is scheduled to be completed by November fourth this year. That has been a project in the works for several years. So it's good that it's coming to fruition this year. The town received good news this week when we received the approved wetland permit for the Salhegan River Trail. The permit is approved subject to a thirty-day appeal period that commenced on June sixteenth. The project is on schedule to be advertised and bid in August and September of this year with construction occurring in two thousand twenty-three. Once again, this is great news. This project has been going on for a number of years. And, and finally, I'd just like to give an update about the around the bout of By Turkey Hill Road. Somebody has brought to my attention that it kind of looks like it's a little bit weedy and sparse. We have planted wildflowers in that, in, in there as part of the original work. We have called back the vendor last week. He came back and did another planting of wildflowers into that area, and hopefully with all the rains we're getting, we'll should start seeing flowers popping up very shortly.
Excellent. Thanks, Paul. No consent agenda. So item number one under Old Businesses, the council to consider the acceptance of recommended changes to Chapter one eleven Conservation Areas of the Merrimack Town Code pursuant to Charter Article Five. I don't know if anybody has anything further. Did you, should we touch on anything in particular, Paul?
There were some changes made from the last public hearing. We added three appendices, A, B, and C, took the parcels out of the appendice, out of the, the, well, Chapter one eleven and put them in the appendices. That is, Tim Tenave, who's been working on the project for Conservation Commission, sent it to Tim, and he was acceptable to all those changes. So the reason why I put on Old Businesses is because we did make those changes in case there was questions from the council, and Tim is here to answer any of your questions.
It took three days' worth of effort to pull those things together.
Yes, it was, it was a large project in community development that to pull everything together and find all those parcels.
I think that was a good idea for that to be included. Tom?
I had one question, and it came out of the minutes. In the minutes, it talks about the council agreed that individuals who are willing to make efforts to maintain the ground should have the option to use them responsibly for their OHRVs. So, and I tried to read back through here and understand what that discussion was about. And I think it's that they're not allowed, nobody's allowed to drive except for, so it's three D two, one, 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 one D two. The last sentence says, no person, well, two says, no person shall drive, operate, or maintain any motor vehicle, la da da, in a conservation area excluding town personnel or contractors for official purposes. Is the, the minutes describing people that are working on those grounds, like the Conservation Committee, is considered town personnel? Or am I misunderstanding something? Are we saying that, that Conservation Commission people can drive their OHRVs on these conservation lands?
What has happened in the past with the Conservation Commission, if they are bringing in an OHRV, say to a job, if they're replacing a bridge or something, and they bring in an OHRV in, they will contact my office and say, I'm bringing in an OHRV to do that. They'll bring the materials in, and then they'll take the OHRV and bring it back out of the property and then work on the property. So to answer your question in a long way, yes, Conservation Commission members are an extension of the town council.
Town personnel.
To town personnel to do those kind of, and maintain those kind of projects.
Okay.
They, they just can't drive their OHRV through the trails.
Right, and, and that's where it brings in a little bit of a hazy question, and if somebody challenges seeing someone out there, and it just looks like their neighbor that's out there and doesn't realize that they're quote unquote, working in their official capacity as Conservation Commission members. Town, town personnel would have a badge or something like that. I don't know that Conservation Commission members do, but, but I'm okay with that being that way. I just wanted to make sure we, we made sure people understood as much as possible out front here that that's.
And, and like I said, usually there's a lot of conservation members out there working on a project that isn't, oh, I'm taking my OHRV to check on the bridge. It's, they're actually a bunch of volunteers that are working on a particular project when, if there is an OHRV that is needed to bring supplies.
And you said they normally would contact your office first?
Yeah, in the past, they have contacted the town manager's office to let us know or ask for permission, not even to let us know, but ask us for permission to be able to take a personal OHRV in there to bring in the materials.
Okay. Thank you.
Does anybody have anything further? Seen nothing. What's the pleasure of the council? Going once.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion by Tom Kanig, seconded by Barbara. Any further discussion on the motion? Seen none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Seven zero zero. Thank you, Tim, for all that monstrous effort by somebody volunteered to do that.
And this was actually Tim Tenave's last official act with the Conservation Commission, getting this approved. So congratulations. And once again, this has been also a very long project that has taken a couple of years to finish, so we're getting some stuff accomplished.
Yep, very, very good. Thanks again.
Thank you very much, Tim, for all your efforts and for your work on the Conservation Commission. We're glad to see you go, but glad that you stuck it out to finish this project.
You're most welcome. Thank you for your contribution.
Very good. Excellent.
So you could quit, so you could move on.
Good, good. You'll be back. Take care, thanks. Under New Business, first item under New Business, Committee Appointments. We have thirteen positions being filled. Conservation Commission, Parks and Rec, Planning Board, Town Center Committee, and Zoning Board. So I think, I know there's two people that I can see this evening, there's for appointments, so what I, what we'll do, I don't know if we want to break this up in any fashion, or if we want to vote on all thirteen at once.
We can do that, or we can do it according to boards or commissions.
The committees, yeah. Yeah, I think that's a good idea, so. On Conservation Commission, we have Ellen Cobb, Gage Perry, Gina Rosati. For Conservation, Gina Rosati would be an alternate member. The others are full members.
Can I just confirm that these are all reappointments?
These, yes, these are, these are reappointments.
Well, the Conservation Commission.
Yes, yeah. So.
Move to approve those appointments?
Motion by Tom Kanig, seconded by Nancy, Nancy Murphy. Got to be clear on that, I suppose. So all those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Say seven zero zero. So you don't believe Gage is here, but if you would like to meet me up over that microphone.
Aye, and state your name.
Aye, Ellen Cobb.
Aye, Gina Rosati.
Do solemnly swear and sincerely swear.
Do solemnly swear and sincerely swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform. All of the duties incumbent on me as.
All of the duties incumbent upon me as.
A full member, an alternate member.
A full member.
An alternate member.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Agreeable to the rules and regulations of this constitution.
According to the rules and regulations of this constitution.
And the laws of the state of New Hampshire.
And the laws of the state of New Hampshire.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you very much.
You're so welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty. The next members are Laura Jane, this is for Parks and Rec Committee. Laura Jane's a full member, Christine Lavoy is a full member, Tracy McGrath, a full member, Philip Presbazewski, a full member. And then there's a student, Carmen Gomod, is going to be the student representative. I believe that for a year, I think that is only for a year, it's not a, it's a full term. Um, you know, I, I think it's been something, I think it's been here. But we've done it before, have we not? We. No, I know that, but I didn't know if we, I thought your question is, have we had student reps?
No, no.
Okay, I'm sorry.
She a new appointment.
Okay. The answer, question, asked and answered. Sorry, Tom, thank you. All right, I don't know if any of those folks might be here.
No.
Okay.
Just you, that'll make it easier.
You could just swear her.
Means you can come right up, let me. Oh, yes. Would like, somebody like to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, sorry, thank you, though. Motion by Andy, seconded by Nancy Harrington. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Seven zero zero. Can't look your fingers after COVID, right? Okay.
I, Tracy McGrath, oh, where is it? There we go, at the bottom. I, Tracy McGrath, do solemnly swear and sincerely swear that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent on me as a full member of the Parks and Recreation Committee, according to the best of my abilities, agreeable to the rules and regulations of this constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help me God. See you later.
Next committee is the Planning Board. We have Robert Best as a full member, Nelson Disco as an alternate member, and Jamie Von Schoen as a full member. And I don't think I, those three are not here, so I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Barbara, seconded by Andy. Any further discussion? Seen none, I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Seven zero zero. And then the. All right, next committee is the Town Center Committee, and we have Bill Cummings as a full member. Reappoint, yep. A motion by Tom Kanig.
Second.
Seconded by Nancy Harrington. Any discussion on the motion? Seen none? Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained? Seven zero zero. And then, want me to hold on, Tom? Last one on the, last one. Sorry. There's a zoning board of adjustment, and it's Patrick Dwyer is a full member. And what is the pleasure of the council?
Just as a question, the zoning board and the planning board, did you guys interview them or?
Yes, I'm sorry, and I do have the, the recommendations here in the folder if you'd like to see them.
I just wanted to hear that you guys did.
Yes, we did, Wednesday, Tuesday. What, what day was it? It was Wednesday.
We had a marathon interview.
No, it was Tuesday, yeah. Yes, I had another thing last night, but, yeah, too, we.
And we did. I'll wait, I'll wait to make a comment.
Move to approve?
Second.
For Patrick Dwyer.
For Patrick Dwyer. Motion by Andy, seconded by Barbara. Any discussion on the motion? Seen none? Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Seven zero zero.
The other comment I'd like to say is, we did have a marathon interview session, and as the public does not probably know, but the councils do know, that there are really three boards or commission, that the council needs to re-interview for reappointment because they're quasi judicial. And those are the Conservation Commission, the Planning Board, and the Zoning Board of Adjustment. So those people that we have appointed this evening were all interviewed. Most of them, all of them, were reappointments. We did express, Finley and I expressed our sincere appreciation for their time spent and their continuing service, and just want to make sure the council knows that we've expressed that to them.
And we let Chairman, Planning Board Chairman Bob Best know that he had a little ways to go to catch up to Nelson, who is still working it, so. All righty.
And just for the, just for the public's knowledge, those people that didn't show up here need to stop by the town clerk's office to get sworn in, even though they've been on the board before, they need to be re-sworn in.
Yes. And then, and also, just to wrap up on your thought, on other committees, because they're, they're not, they're not committees that have a, you know, some standing with our planning board or what have you, or the zoning board, we, those, if you're a first-time member, those get interviewed, but people who are getting reappointed generally don't require an interview. All righty, we'll move on. Next item under New Business is the council to be presented by Life Scout George Schultz, his proposal, proposed Eagle Scout project to build a stairway into the hillside of Twin Bridge Park, which will improve accessibility to the park for those with mobility issues. Thank you, George. We always look forward to Eagle Scout projects, so.
Scout project.
And this looks like a big one. This is wonderful. This is like a Christmas present, I don't know. I was, I didn't know they were here. All right. George, just do me, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but if you could just make sure that light is green, bright green. There you go. Excellent, thank you.
All right, thank you. So my name is George Schwartz, I'm a life scout with Troop four two four, and I'm here to present stairs for Twin Bridges Park. Right, so the first question is, why build stairs at Twin Bridges Park? And the answer is pretty simple. It basically provides an easier way of walking down the pretty steep hill right by the parking lot at the main entrance to the park. It's been just a plain old hill for many years, and everyone who's gone down it has always thought that they might slip and fall at some point. The gravel there is pretty unstable, and it's easy to slip. So this, these stairs would provide an easier way of walking down it, and it would also prevent against erosion by slowing the running water that goes down that hill. So this is the location of the stairs, it would just be right on that main pathway next to the dirt road there. And so here we have a little basic sort of design that I found that was closest to what I would be trying to build, and I have a little display of where all of these stairs would roughly be going, just to show kind of how it would split it up, because that's, the stairs are very close together in the picture there, but really, that's, it's just separating that steep grade. We'd be building stairs that are roughly six inches tall, and they would be actually, yeah, six inches tall, and they'd be roughly four feet back on average. They're basically just platforms, as you can see in the image on the left. But, yeah, so it cuts up that very steep hill into many manageable steps, twenty-two steps to be exact, it's a lot of steps. It's a lot of steps. And so here we have a little drawing of mine, not very great, and probably needs to be updated because the size of the wood is not correct. Just ignore, ignore that. So it would be six pieces of landscaping timbers per stair. So it would be doubling up on timbers for each stair, and it would be held into the ground by half inch by two foot rebar. So it would keep it nice and planted in that hill. And so the stairs going back, they'll be varying lengths, but we'll try to keep it as close to a standard length as possible so that it doesn't feel awkward to walk up and down. The stairs will be eight feet, actually nine feet, because you've got the eight foot one in the middle, and then you've got two six inch thick timbers on the sides. So each stair will be nine feet wide, roughly four feet back, and six inches tall. So these are the materials that I would be putting into this. We'd need one hundred thirty-two four inch by four inch by eight foot pressure treated white pine lumbers, six per stair. And then we would need roughly twelve cubic yards of crushed rock. This would be a mixture of the rock that's already there on the path and some new gravel from whatever supplier I can find. And then we'd need one hundred seventy-six rebars, eight per stair. And then we would use gloves, shovels, trucks to haul things in. We'd need a plate compactor to flatten out the gravel and make it easy to walk on and not cause more slippages. And then, in order to work on this, we're gonna need water bottles, food for lunch, and some white paint for marking out the area. And that's for just legal reasons. We mark it out with white paint. I have to call up a dig safe company to make sure that they have a safe place for me to work there, and there's no pipes or anything I'm gonna dig into and break anything. So the price in fundraising, the price is quite high, not too happy about that, but the best I can do. It'll be roughly thirteen hundred dollars for lumber, four hundred eighty dollars for gravel, two hundred fifty for the rebar, ninety for the tools, and sixty dollars per day for supplies, for a total cost of roughly twenty-six hundred dollars. And that'll be obtained through doing car washes at gas stations, because that's a pretty reliable way to fundraise. And this is my schedule. I already did the Parks and Recreation meeting last Wednesday. Today's the Town Council meeting, and I will soon be signing up for the troupe committee meeting to get it approved there, the Eagle Council meeting, and then fundraising and everything else gets figured out after that. But this is just nominal dates, stuff that will probably definitely be changed when we get to that. Yeah, so, any questions?
No, this is, this is a huge project.
It is a huge project.
It's definitely needed, because I've walked down here.
Yeah, I was just gonna say the same thing, that it's definitely a needed project because all of us take that shortcut. We don't walk out to the road, I mean, that's just, you know, too far. But anyways, yeah, slipping and sliding down there, and I've done it in the rain when I've been out there with litter crew, and it can get interesting when you're going down there when it's wet, so, good project, thank you.
George, thank you again. George's project was rather enthusiastically accepted by the Parks and Rec Committee on its meeting June fifteenth, and I certainly encourage the council to be enthused and let the project go forward. He answered the Parks and Rec Committee's questions rather succinctly and carefully, and go for it.
Thank you.
Nancy?
This is one of the things we all enjoy, having you guys come up here, and ladies also. There's so many great projects that have been done by the, you know, the group, so. I just want to make a comment, we've never received, at least I haven't, a nominal project schedule in any of the previous presentations, and I just find it very interesting because it really does highlight the process that you have to go through to get this. I mean, we sort of intellectually knew they had to go through something, but it really sort of highlighted it, and good for you. It's a lot of work, and it's gonna be a lot of work to complete it too, but you need to know that we appreciate offering to do that, as we do all of the Eagle Scout projects. So thank you, you did a good job.
Yep, thank you.
Great job. I did, I did just have one question for clarity. You're using four by fours for the steps?
Yes.
Okay.
They'll be landscaping timbers, so it's gonna be.
Okay, and how do you get, or six inches, I think is what I'm trying to.
So basically, we're gonna stack two of them on top of each other, and then they're gonna sit roughly two inches into the ground. So like, the height that you'll actually see will be roughly.
Okay, so the timber on one step is not gonna be going over the timber below it on the next step? I thought it would be resting on top, that's why I didn't know if you would.
So it is. So, yeah, can I go back here?
Sure.
We'll see how I can do this. Yeah, so it'll be, the rebar is gonna hold in each step into the wood from the step below it, so it's just basically gonna be a doubled up version of what you see here on the left, where, yeah, the rebar is gonna squish them together.
Okay. Great. Well, I've learned that Eagle Scouts are the movers and shakers of the future, and so we definitely, people sat here tonight, a few of us, we appreciate all you guys bringing together all, and Girl Scouts, gotta be inclusive here, but all of the projects are always amazing, and again, this one is a big project you've got going, so we definitely appreciate it. So what's the pleasure of the council?
I'd like to make one more comment.
Please.
We used to get ready, and we happened for quite a while. What I'd like you to do is, when you are going to be inducted, or whatever you, what do you call it? Is it awarded?
It's a board of honor.
When you have that, would you send a note to the town manager? Because I'd like to attend some of them, because I think it's an honor that you should be awarded by us as well.
Yeah, I also sent an email to Anita Krieger as well.
Okay. Okay?
I'll do that.
So just let the town manager, he'll make sure we know.
Yep.
The pleasure of the council?
Move to approve this, the Eagle Scout project?
Second.
Motion by Tom Kenny, seconded by Barbara. Is there any further discussion on your motion? See none?
I'd just like to recognize another new Eagle Scout who's sitting here tonight with his troop mate. Eagle Scout Jan had his, just what, a couple of weeks ago?
His brother, actually.
His brother. And, yeah, and it was, we were very lucky to be able to attend that, and I, I agree. It'd be so nice if the, if the council has a heads up around those things, because I think, you know, it's certainly, you guys are doing amazing work, and what a benefit to the community, so, thank you for that. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Alrighty. So, obviously, no further comment, I'll call the question, all those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed or abstained, seven zero zero. If there's anything that has to be signed or whatever, you can reach out to the town manager, but otherwise, thanks for this great project. I appreciate it and looking forward to seeing it come together.
Good luck, especially with raising three thousand dollars, that's gonna be a tough one.
Car washes are good, though.
Excellent presentation, too. Thank you.
Yes, because I just called them today.
I talked to Public Works, and they sent me an email saying seventy-two hours in a day.
That's what they say.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make sure it's.
They came out on Sunday, they were supposed to be there at my house on Tuesday, so.
I called them today, and they told me it'll be the twenty eighth, so that's five days.
Just, just so you know.
All right. Yep, thank you. Good information to have.
Thanks again. Alrighty. Item number three under new business, council will consider donation in the amount of three hundred dollars from Comcast Xfinity. The council will consider donation in the amount of three hundred dollars from Comcast Xfinity to the Parks and Rec Department to sponsor the summer movies nights in the park, pursuant to RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five B and Charter Article Eight, Section fifteen.
This is Comcast Xfinity's first donation to the town, and it's coming to help pay for some of the licensing fees for movies in the park.
The letter reaching out about doing it is pretty nice, so. Alright, pleasure of the council?
Move to accept the, accept the donation in the amount of three hundred dollars from Comcast Xfinity to the Parks and Recs Department to sponsor summer movie night in the park pursuant to RSA thirty-one colon nine five dash small B and Charter Article eight dash fifteen.
Second.
Motion by Andy, seconded by Lauren. Any further discussion? See none? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, seven zero zero, with thanks. Yes. Alright, item number four under new business, the council to consider request to withdraw one hundred forty-three thousand three hundred sixty dollars from the wastewater infrastructure capital reserve fund for the purchase of a replacement service crane truck. This truck is a two thousand twenty-two Dodge Ram fifty-five hundred. Sarita, good evening.
Sarita's here, and she's gonna give you all the beautiful details that go along with it. We're just asking, there is some money in the capital reserve fund for this project, and it was budgeted.
So Chairman Rothaus, I do have a presentation that shows the pictures, and I thought, I think it might be nice for the public to see the pictures, if that's okay?
Oh, no, absolutely, because I'm sure.
Okay.
This is so wonderful, I have to say.
So, thank you guys, thank members of Town Council for allowing me to present this, wow, this is loud today. Allowing me to present this presentation to request the withdrawal of one hundred and forty-three thousand three hundred sixty dollars from the wastewater CRF fund for a crane truck. What I'd like to discuss today is show everyone what the current crane truck looks like. We also have an F-150, and our plan is to replace both an F-150 and the current crane truck with the new crane truck. Talk a little bit about the operation of the crane truck, the F-150, and the issues that we have. Review the bid price, and then I'd be happy to answer any questions and discuss anything that you'd like. So what you see here is the nineteen eighty-seven truck, to which a nineteen seventy-six crane was affixed. The crane, if you take a look at it, there's a considerable amount of rust, and the crane's actually used to lift equipment, both at the wastewater treatment plant and at our remote pump stations. Now, this particular crane has a twenty-three foot reach, and it is considered a knuckle boom, which I actually didn't know until just recently, which means that it has to move up like this. In order to extend the crane to the twenty-three feet, you actually have to physically add on the attachments. So it's a very physical operation. If you take a look here at this crane on this side over here, we actually, there are levers there that you use to operate the crane. So a person actually physically stands at the crane itself, and they operate these levers in order to move it. This particular crane has a seven thousand pound maximum capacity lift. When you lift vertically, it would be seven thousand pounds with the first horizontal, vertical lift. If you put on the attachments, that decreases. Horizontally, it would be significantly lower, probably around a thousand pounds. We don't have the spec sheet anymore on it. The truck, the crane itself does not satisfy all the needs at the wastewater treatment plant, so it cannot lift all the equipment that we have because of the reach. The twenty-three feet, a foot reach just isn't sufficient for us. A couple of the other concerns with this truck includes we have, the hydraulic lines are in need of replacement. The outriggers, which are, if you look here on the crane on this, on the truck on the side, it helps stabilize the crane. They're actually leaking hydraulic fluid. We have electrical issues with the lighting. The lift pistons need to be rebuilt, and the truck, well, nineteen eighty-seven truck isn't as reliable as it was in nineteen eighty-seven. So, we, we went out for bid for the crane truck. Now, what we real, what we also have at the plant is we have a two thousand twelve Ford F-150. Now, the Ford F-150 is used to go to, do our daily rounds to our pump station. So we have nine remote pump stations, which we check every single day. Vitally important to check them every day, because by doing so, you can catch issues or problems at the pump stations prior to them becoming catastrophic. So the truck itself has got a fair amount of rust. The transmission has shifting issues, and there are electrical issues in the truck with the lighting system. And the truck definitely needs new tires before the winter. The truck that we're proposing to purchase is, looks really nice. It is not a knuckle boom, it actually slides out, the crane itself will slide out. It has a twenty-nine foot reach. It also can lift a maximum of eight thousand pounds. So the eight thousand pounds, if you look at this chart, you'll see that the first extension has, can lift eight thousand pounds. What we really use these crane trucks for is for the horizontal lift. So if you look here at the horizontal lift, if you have the two extensions, which brings you to twenty-nine feet, you can lift about twelve hundred pounds. So usually, the, the largest piece of equipment that we try to lift with these cranes is about seven, eight hundred pounds, and so this will satisfy that need perfectly. The current crane truck, because of that poor reach, isn't able to reach places like our aeration basins, where we have our mixers, and we have gearbox failures over there. So what the guys do is they have to actually get a lull to lift and move it. They put it on a dolly, and then they physically move the five hundred or the couple hundred pound gearbox around. So I really think with a new crane truck, we'll also enhance safety. Another, whoops, sorry. Another aspect of the crane truck is you can see here that it has compartments there to store tools. Well, right now, what happens, because the F-150 is a two seater, the guys will go out, they'll do their inspections, and then when they go back, if there are problems, they come back to the plant, they pick up whatever tools they need, and they go back. So I think this will enhance efficiency, because we'll be able to keep the tools with the truck, and if there are problems in the field, minor, that don't require a second person to be with them, they can make the repairs, and if a second person needs to be with them, they can come to the plant site. One other point I wanted to make, you might, you might be surprised by this. Well, I'm not doing very well operating this. We can't find parts for the truck or the crane, it's, so, it's really difficult to repair, because we can't find the parts. We received two bids, one was for one hundred forty-three thousand three hundred sixty dollars. The second one was for one hundred sixty-one thousand two hundred and thirty dollars, and I'm respectfully requesting permission to withdraw that money from the sewer infrastructure improvement CRF. One thing I didn't mention about the new crane truck, it, it can also tow equipment. So if we have to take a bobcat out to one of the remote pump stations, it can tow the trailer with a bobcat. It can transport also, during this project, we'll be doing bypass pumping. If, if we need to help with the transport of some of the piping for the bypass pumping, it can tow that as well. And the crane can lift heavy equipment also and help us with that process as well.
Great, thanks, Sarita. I just had one quick question. You said that we had in the, we had planned on a hundred and twenty-five thousand, so we're about eighteen thousand higher, and you said you were gonna sell those two pieces of equipment to make up the difference, but I think it's hard pressed to get eighteen thousand dollars.
I don't think.
When I look at it, I, I just don't see that there's much value in it at all, but maybe there is, but I'm short, short of the eighteen, so we're able to.
The capital reserve fund can absorb any shortage that would come from those. We get anywhere from three to five thousand dollars on trade with it. Yep, yep, even auction, we'll send it out to auction, you'll be surprised. Yep, yep, even auction, we'll send it out to auction, you'll be surprised, people would like that eighty-seven, they love the crane. Somebody who's into lifting trees on their property for sawmills, they would love that, that they could lift a tree up and put it on the sawmill where they're not doing it. There's, there's a bunch of different uses for this equipment out there. It's just like Sarita said, for us right now, it's a little long in the tooth. The other thing she forgot to mention was that the truck is coming from Ohio. So we just, that's where our purchasing reach now is going out to for some of this equipment and some of these vehicles, is that locally, they're, they're out of supply, but there are supply out there throughout the country that we are reaching out to to get these, these pricing.
So the vendor does have the chassis in house, and they're talking about a ninety to a hundred and twenty day delivery time, and they're going to drive the truck to us.
Deliver.
Deliver.
Nice.
Is this a new truck?
Brand new.
Okay.
Two thousand twenty-two.
So, hi Sarita.
Hi.
Question, is it coming with the hitch?
I don't know.
Have them throw the hitch in.
Okay, I will find out, I don't know.
Rather than us putting it on when it gets here and having additional costs to it.
Okay, I will, I will definitely look into that, and I will get back to, to Mr. McAllie, and he can.
And you mentioned that usually there are two guys that go out, never usually anymore, so that you wouldn't need an extend cab or anything like that at any point in time?
So I'm glad you brought that up. With the existing crane truck, there's always two guys that go out because one person operates the lever and the other one, other person watches for the truck. With this truck, we actually have a remote, so one person would be able to watch what he's lifting and moving using the remote. So, much, much safer.
Sorry about that. Any further questions or comments?
Do you anticipate a single person operating the crane?
No, no, we always have two people there.
Okay.
From a safety perspective, you need to have two people there.
I was thinking, if there was an accident, one guy doing it, even though he's got the remote, it's not going to help him much.
Not going to help him, yeah, no, we'd always have two people there.
Okay, thank you.
And we will do something called a job hazard analysis when we receive the truck to fully vet out everything that's there, and when we do the training, fully vet out what needs to be done from the safety perspective.
Awesome, thank you.
All right. Somebody interested in a motion?
I move to approve the withdrawal of one hundred and forty-three thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars from the wastewater infrastructure capital reserve fund for the purchase of a replacement service crane truck as presented tonight by Sarita.
Second.
Any signatures or anything like that? Okay.
So you can, can throw that in there?
What?
You can throw any.
Oh, and authorize the town manager to sign any and all paperwork and/or his designee.
I don't know if it was necessary or not, but. Motion by Tom Kenny, seconded by Nancy Murphy. Any further discussion, seeing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, seven zero zero. Thank you, Sarita.
Thank you very much, have a nice evening.
Take care.
Thank you, Sarita.
Item number five hundred new business, council will be presented with the third quarter twenty twenty-one, twenty-two budget for financial update, and Tom seems to be missing, I'm sure Paul is going to be doing it. He couldn't help himself, he had to get back in the saddle.
Yes, exactly. I'd say I have more hair, but you know, that's a lie. Good evening, Tom apologizes, he, he had a family emergency tonight, so he couldn't be here. And it was funny, he came into my office and said, do you think you can handle that? No, not at all.
Thanks for your concern.
So, yeah.
See if you can be as quick as he is.
Yes, I'll be real quick. Electric, electrical kilowatts, as you know, we look at a couple of different things on, instead of looking at what we're paying for electricity, look at our consumption for electricity and see how we're doing year over year. There are a couple of divisions that are higher in electricity usage as of March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. Highway plant, because we have the new building, so there's two buildings on there instead of just one. The library used a little bit more electricity this year, Parks and Rec is using a little bit more electricity. Police usage is down, street light usage is down, and traffic lights are staying, staying constant. We go out and get our electric contract, I believe we have an electric contract for about just over seven cents a kilowatt through twenty twenty-four. So hopefully, we'll be able to ride out the ebbs and flows of what's coming. That does not, the seven cents kilowatt is just for consumption. It's not for the transport, so we might see an increase because of transport as well. We do the same thing for.
So on the highway.
Yes.
We've had that building up and running now with two buildings for a bit, so what was the spike?
We're.
In this quarter?
We're getting used, it was used, how do I say this? Heating and other items in the building, we're using the old building to store our equipment and things of that sort. With the storms that occurred, there were longer storms, the lights were on more, the trucks were in there being warmed up, things of that sort. We, we use, we do have natural gas, but some of the block heaters in the trucks, things of that sort. It was a lot of the old building, and more so that the new building's being used more as well because we have more people in there now than we did prior, we were short a couple of staffs. So there's some additional computers, things of that sort, in the IT server room and other things. That's really what's driving the electricity up there. Okay, the next one is our therm usage for natural gas. Once again, we do have a extended contract, and I believe that one also is up in next year, twenty twenty-three, December of twenty twenty-three. So we're hoping things will stabilize by then. As you can see, most of them are constant year after year. In this case, the highway garage, even though I said we had longer storms, the heat, the use of natural gas was down for therms, but electricity was up because of other items in, in the building. Fire department used more natural gas than, than the year before. Honestly, I, I don't know why that is, except that, you know, there, we did fix the Reed's Ferry Station last year, we had some issues with it. So we, we fixed it and had some more, we had more equipment in there this winter than we normally would over the year that we had to keep warm, we had an extra fire truck, things of that sort, a pumper truck in there. So they would have to raise the heat a little bit on that to keep those therms going. Next is health insurance. Health insurance, we spent about two million, three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. The overall budget was three point five, so we're about sixty-seven percent. So we're doing a little bit better with, with health insurance, and that's the dual factor. The rates came in lower than what our guaranteed max was when we did the budget, and because of staffing vacancies. New Hampshire retirement, we're right on track. We, we expected these spikes from group one, which is everybody except fire and police in town. Fire and police showing higher than the previous year. However, we knew that because there were some massive increases that New Hampshire retirement pushed down on the town. We're about seventy-four percent of budget, after the third quarter, we should have been about seventy-five, so we're in good shape there with New Hampshire retirement. Overtime, as you can see, overtime is pretty constant through all divisions. Fire departments overtime's down a little bit from the prior year. That has to do with a number of factors. One factor is, is that we were running a lot, because COVID, we're running more men on shift. We are still running eleven men on shift every day. However, the overtime costs are, are a little bit lower than the prior year. Because of the openings in police right now that we had, we've been running overtime to fill some of the shifts on the weekends, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, some of the busier shifts. We, we are running so that the town is not left without the adequate number of police officers on the street. The one bad thing is that we are over on the overtime budget through the third quarter, we're at a hundred and six percent. However, we have a savings on the salaries that makes up the difference. So it's because we're, we're short-staffed that some of these overtimes are, are a little bit higher that we're running.
The same thing with communications, is there, is there still an opening in communications?
Yes, there is, we actually just went out, we're doing a background check on, on an individual. So yes, there is an opening there, and that's why that overtime is higher, but it's offset by salary savings. And then this just breaks it down a little bit more because fire kind of skews that other chart, so this is individually where you can see where we're at. Solid waste is a little bit higher as well. Once again, we had some people out on extended sick time. So like I said before, when we cover solid waste on a Saturday, it's a hundred percent overtime because the guys already, from highway or wastewater, already work their forty-hour shift. So it's a little bit higher to cover overtime on, at solid waste on Saturday, so that's why that's up a little bit. And then general government's reduced significantly, and all other departments is all the remaining departments in town, and as you can see, that, that's reduced also considerably from, from year over year. Departmental wise, the summary of, of departmental wise, you'll see that's, we're right now at about twenty-eight percent of our overall remaining budget. There are a couple of big items that we have, we have already obligated. Wastewater Treatment Bond for sixteen million dollars, that's at a zero percent, so that brings down that twenty-eight percent. Overall, we're, we're pretty much right online, we should have a surplus of appropriations this year. The general government one that shows we have remaining balance about three point four million dollars. A lot of that is the hour money that we got in. As of May thirty-first, we still didn't let out the fire truck, the ladder truck for two, one point five million. We didn't let out the remaining one point three million, plus or minus the wastewater for the additional, the additional wastewater projects, that all came in the April timeframe. So, you know, some of that money is accounted for through Ara and other grant fundings that we have received. But overall, departments are very healthy. We should show a surplus appropriations, well, fiscal year ends next Thursday. So what I, all my, all my numbers are tracking of a surplus in appropriations due to staffing shortages and other things, but we're on track to have a good fiscal year. And no department, I don't, I don't believe any department will be coming forward to the town council to ask for money to be moved. So that's also good with all the items that we have been doing. Now the fun stuff. I'm talking revenues. So interest, we know where interest was for almost the first nine months of this year. The Fed started raising it after March. Building permits are doing well. Even though auto registrations are down a little bit, we're still going to hit our number for the fiscal year end. Last week, Diane was telling me, we had a gentleman, and his bill was over seven thousand dollars. Registered a crane. First time in her twenty-four, her, her career that registered a crane. Somebody bought a crane in town of Merrimack and brought it, a crane, a crane. It was over a seven thousand dollar bill for the crane.
I whimpered over eleven hundred dollars one year.
Yeah, so, so the registrations are coming in, the influx of the apartments has, we have seen that also, has also why some of our revenues in, in auto registrations are up. That's also a good sign, because as you know, we have that five dollar fee on every registration. So that takes it, and now that goes more into paving. So next year or the year after, we can look at increasing the paving to offset, you know, the ten thousand dollars more or the fifteen thousand dollars more we're getting. Granted, it's not a lot with paving dollars, but we are using that Fund Forty-two, we call it, that everybody pays that five dollars to go back and use it and put it on the roads and pave those roads. And whether we're doing crack sealing or paving, and we are using the money as it's intended, and that will, that will also help us in the future going forward. The other thing Diane's saying is that seeing, sorry, not and saying, is that campers, we're seeing a lot of registrations of campers.
Yeah, that would make sense.
You know, at one point this year, we ran out of trailer plates. We ran out of trailer plates because everybody around, around, in May, right around the end of May, we ran, we were short on trailer plates, and we had actually a sign, if you're here to register a trailer, sorry, we don't have any trailer plates, they'll be coming in shortly.
Interesting.
So, yeah, so we ran out of trailer plates, so things of that sort. And then this just breaks it down even more to show where we're doing. Now, I would be concerned with, with the interest because we, we budgeted about eleven, three hundred thousand dollars for interest, and we're projecting roughly around a hundred thousand, which would be a two hundred thousand dollar swing. However, we have significant revenues from insurance rebates and some other items that we did that we, the revenue should be very healthy this year, and I, I believe will be surpassing some of our revenue goals. Building permits, very strong this year, as, as should be with all the building that's been going on, but very strong this year, and will be surpassing, you know, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar mark where we were budgeting. So we should be doing very, we're doing very well in those areas. And like I said, we have seven more days in the fiscal year, and the revenues are, are very strong is what I saw today when I looked at them real quick.
So I've been hearing recently that auto sales are actually on a decline.
Decline?
That's what I, that's what I had heard more recently, and I, are we somewhat protected because of the growth in, in the apartments and things of that nature?
Yeah, we're insulated because of that as well. The other thing is a lot of the people bought out leases. Now granted, it's three years after the fact.
Right.
So we're not seeing the, the brand-new lease versus here, but these cars are still pretty new, and it goes on book, not book value, but MSRP value. So, you know, if you're, if you, case in point, if you're leasing an Audi, you're looking at eight, if you're leasing an A three to an A five, you're talking forty-five to fifty thousand dollars for the car. If you're buying it three years later, it's based on that forty-five, fifty, so. Yeah, our revenues are not as great because of the percentage we get in year one, but the values of the cars are going up too. And the other thing that helped us with our auto registrations is just that. As everybody knows, that I believe used cars went up forty percent. So people that were coming off or needed a car, had to buy a used car, they were forty percent higher in, in coming in with the value, so that also helped with the auto registrations. We're hoping that the chip shortage works its way out in two thousand twenty-three, that's what we're hearing, that it'll start working its way out, and when that happens, some of these people will be turning in these leases that they purchased outright to, to move on. But if, if you're willing to wait five to six months for a brand-new vehicle, that's basically the waiting time for a brand-new vehicle, and expect to pay MSRP plus plus. That's what we've been hearing.
All right, I just, I mean, the last downswing years ago, what, oh, seven, eight, I thought we kind of dodged a bullet compared to other places in the country. I'm hoping the same holds true because the, what's happening is, as a non-economist, seems a little scary to me, so.
No, it's scary to me. It's scary to me to look at this stuff and, you know, we were really, it's five million, six hundred thousand dollars, five million, six hundred plus for auto registrations. That's a big chunk of money. If you come up a hundred thousand dollars short, you got to find it someplace else. You come up two hundred thousand dollars short, now you're talking, cut someplace, you know. We, we try not to, if we don't, if we're not getting the revenues in, and we're not going to hit our revenue numbers, we back off on our appropriation side because we don't really want to use fund balance to offset one another, so, you know, and that could be a, a piece of equipment or, or a computer purchase that we back off on, on, on the backside. But right now, like I said, we're doing real well.
Very good.
How do the numbers look on those screens? I'm over here, I can't see it.
This is, this is a treat.
No, it's something that I, I, just if I can expand for a minute. Nicholas and I have been talking about this for a really long time. I was actually talking to Nick, saying we could put one in the middle, one there, one there.
I know, I'm glad you're with us.
And Nicholas, Nicholas went out and said, you know what, Paul, for the price, can I just put, and what he was thinking is two, two and two, and I talked him into the third one after he did two, two and two, so. But Nicholas is really happy, it's, it's something that he wanted to do for a while. Other boards that have more members than seven or eight are going to have to share the screens, but I believe that it will be very useful when you're looking at plan documents and things of that sort. But I believe that it'll be very useful when you're looking at plan documents and things like that, so we'll, we'll plan a board too.
Definitely. Oh, just in the budget, you're gonna die and go to heaven.
As long as I can control it here.
The, 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 the other thing is that this is your cable franchise fees on your bills that are, that go to this. And this is the use that we're using them for. So it, it, once again, it's going back to the, the purpose intent.
No, and it really, it, it's really nice because that screen's too far away for me. This one breaks my neck looking backwards, so.
Okay.
So no, very good.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. Are we all set? Thanks, Paul, you, you did a wonderful job.
Thank you for pinch hitting.
All right. Item number six under new business, um, is the, the council, um, had, uh, finally gotten together with the town manager's, uh, evaluation. And, um, we reviewed that and reviewed his self-assessment and, um, are, are happy with, uh, how Paul's been performing. Um, he jumped in and was ready to go from the beginning, so I don't know if there's a motion.
I'd like to make a motion. I would like to move to approve the town manager's evaluation for two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two.
Give it the lives. Motion by Nancy Harrington, seconded by Lon. Um, no further discussion, I'll call the ques- please.
I just wanted to, because I, as the outgoing chairman, I was responsible for the, thank you. I was responsible for, for making sure this happened, uh, due to a lot of circumstances that were out of our control, my control. Um, it was delayed by a couple of months. But, um, we as a council, uh, were very happy, uh, with the performance Paul has made, especially being a first year town manager. Of course, he spent many years as the assistant town manager and many years before that as the finance director. Um, and so he's very familiar with the town. He's able to step in and, and do the job, uh, knows so many people, so many people know him. It's, it's been an obviously wonderful situation to have him be able to attend events in town, to be understood and, and, uh, and things of that nature. And to have a, a good feel for the pulse of the town of Merrimack. So, uh, as a council, we gave him a, a four, which is a very good rating, um, out of a, a range of five. Uh, and s- and satisfactory to excellent. We, I figure he hasn't quite walked on water in his first year, so we didn't wanna give him a five. But, uh, the average we came up with was somewhere just north of four. And we, we only had a choice of one through five on this evaluation sheet that is a, I think came from Tom Mahon. Back in the days, and we've been using it forever. So we were extremely happy. I would go through and read some of the comments that the council made, but they would just extend things. Um, suffice it to say that everybody pointed out how, uh, impressed they were with the way Paul's been, uh, working, functioning in the, in the position, coming up to speed. Um, tried to find some things we thought he should work on and had a hard time with that. Uh, he just really is doing a great job and, uh, we, we really appreciate it and just wanted to make sure he understands, uh, that we, we got his back. We're really supporting him and, and cheering him to go even further.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thanks, Tom. All right.
You gonna stay with us?
Don't ask what you don't wanna hear in answer.
All right.
Very happy, Lon, very happy.
It was motion by Nancy, seconded by Lon. Yep. Well, yep, all set. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, seven, zero, zero. Thanks, Paul. Absolutely. Okay, yeah, next slide is minutes, June nineteenth, June ninth, twenty, twenty-two minutes.
I was gonna say future. Oh, no, it's not.
Not quite.
Not quite.
There, if I may, I'm sorry, there is one change in the minutes. I don't know where it is in the minutes. It was brought to my attention about Tim Tenave. He is not the chair of the conservation commission. Steve Perkins is.
It's on line twelve of page number two.
Two. Um, Becky already made the changes. So they're already been made, so.
Does anybody have? Barbara?
Yeah, on page seven.
We don't have a motion yet.
I'm sorry.
No.
Move to approve.
Yeah, I'm moved to approve with changes.
There you go.
The minutes of, uh, June ninth, two thousand twenty-two.
Moved by Barbara, seconded by Andy.
Go for it, Barbara.
Okay. So on page seven, um, line forty-one, we have, uh, Martel Field, but access is poor. So they worked with planning and building department to come up with. Um, I don't know who they, they worked with because we have the building and code enforcement department and we have planning and zoning department. But we don't have a planning and building department. So how would you like to correct that, Mr. Town Manager?
How about if we say, so they worked with the planning?
Wasn't it the community development?
Yeah.
Uh, just, yeah, lump it together for community development.
They worked with community development and the building depart- you could say that, you could say planning and zoning and the building department? Or you could say, so they work with the planning, you work with the community development department and building department to come?
I like that one the best.
Community development?
Mm-huh.
Okay. And building department?
Yes. Particularly since they're in two very different locations. One is at the firehouse and the other one is here.
Right.
And that's all I have.
Lon.
Yeah, on the same page, uh, same paragraph, line forty-four and line forty-six. I won't speak for Councilor Coynick, but I'll speak for myself, I'm not chairman. I think that should reflect Councilor Woods and probably.
Councilor Coynick, which works very well, thank you.
Thank you.
Nice catch.
Thanks, Lon.
I do read the minutes.
You both got promoted.
I appreciate it.
Tom, did you have anything?
Um, yeah, I did. Um, on page two, line thirty-one, the, the statement I read earlier, should have the option to use them responsibly for their OHR and then a little V S. It probably should be a capital V. Yeah. And I'm just wondering if that really reads clearly. Who are willing to make the effort to maintain these grounds should have the option to use them, to use their personal OHRVs or just to use them responsibly.
If I remember, that was in response to, if there is a group that wants to take on the responsibility of, of maintaining the trails for OHRVs, then the council can make the determination that yes, okay, we are going to allow them to. So I think that, you know, in spite of the criteria that they had set down.
Yeah.
So I think that's what that was in relationship to, not to whether the conservation.
Conservation commission to take them out and use them to work with.
Per se, right. Is that?
That was mine.
Yeah, cause I had, I had asked the question, is there a place in town that you could ride?
And they assured us that. We talked about maintenance. And now I'm remembering it better. How do we clear this up to make it?
Because there's a section in there and it's, that literally says the council can. I can find it really quick. Well, can, uh, let me find it, it'll be really quick.
Responsibly for their OHRVs. It kind of works, it's just awkward.
Pardon?
Yeah, cause I.
It's H, the town council or its designated agent may suspend any of these rules of conduct for any person or group of people for any conservation area or portion of a conservation area after seeking and reviewing a recommendation. They assured us that if they were a group that came up that wanted to take responsibility, that's what could be used to allow that to happen. Cause I needed, that was a concern of mine as well, Andy. And that section assured that made me feel more comfortable that we could do that.
Would it clear that sentence up if at the end of it we put with town council approval?
In the minutes you're talking about?
Yeah. The council agreed that individuals who are willing to make the effort to maintain these grounds should have the option to use them responsibly for their, their OHRVs with town council.
We could also quote the section.
I was thinking the section because it's already stated in there, in that section.
We could say quoting.
Of the code.
One eleven dash one H.
Yeah.
Referring to that section. Cause that would specify it clearly.
Because once you read that section, that paragraph becomes clear.
Correct.
It does? I, okay.
Kinda.
But it, after I read it like four or five times, it did become clear in my mind.
But we had to clarify it verbally.
Cause I did the same thing, I agonized on it for a while.
I think if you change the word ground to trails, it makes a lot more sense as well. The way they wrote it.
Individuals or groups who are willing to make the effort to maintain these trails should be able.
Yeah. Should have the option to use them responsibly for their OHRVs with TC approval.
With, or subject to section H of.
Yep. Yep, subject, subject to.
One eleven dash one H.
Yep.
Subject, yeah, whatever, however you say that. Okay.
Cause then that clearly refers to.
That, that's, that's better. I mean, I obviously misread it completely in my earlier request for information.
Even though your point was well taken, had, had not been brought up before.
Yep. Um, on page three, line seventeen, it says wastewater phase three quarters. I, I know it's hard to force word not to put three quarters when you do a three slash four, but can we try to force it to say three and four?
Yep.
Or something, just so it's a little more clear. And down on line thirty-eight, if, the first time we used MS four, if we could just go ahead and write it out, cause that's what Serida pointed out specifically, what the MS, the multiples for groundwater and sewer sanitation or something like that.
Units will separate.
Just, just so that people can understand it from reading it. I was gonna say that on page four also about the MCMs, but then I noticed right in the sub-bullet above it, it says minimum control measures at line twenty-three. So that's putting up there. And then there was, under, um, page seven, uh, line thirty-two, consolidation of donation to Martel Canteen. I don't know what the agenda actually said, but should that be Martel Field Canteen? Or something, it just, to Martel Canteen sounds like an individual. I mean, I don't care, but.
Technically, it's Sergeant Ed Payne.
Pardon?
Sorry, I don't know how it's on. Technically, the building is called Sar- it's, it was named after Sergeant Ed Payne, oh, building. And that's where the can- what they call the canteen, it's where the concession stand is.
Yeah.
So. We can look at how was, how was the agenda and go, but I think it was canteen, but yeah.
Something like that, yeah.
I think they did call it Martel Canteen, even though that was the incorrect name. It's Martel Field.
Either that or add Martel Field.
Yep.
Just, just so it's. And then so that I can quit nitpicking on page eight. The two motions that I made at lines twenty-six and thirty-three were motions, not a motion to move, to dispose. They were motions to dispose. If you're gonna put in literally what I said, you would leave off motion in the beginning. And Chairman Koenig stated, I move. But, you know, you look at all the other motions and we don't have that extra to move in there. It was a motion to accept or a motion to dispose. It wasn't a motion to move. So if we could remove to move from both of those, it would make me happy.
See what happens when you're not chair anymore, you've got time to really.
Do you know who used to do this? Can you imagine? Tim Tenave was a consummate minute guy. And you could tell by the way. Tim was awesome, I appreciate it.
Oh, absolutely. If you needed editor, it would be him.
I'm sorry. So, okay, I'm done.
Thank you, Tom. Any further corrections? So, um, uh, all those in favor of the directed minutes, just signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, uh, seven, zero, zero. Find my agenda, I don't know what I've done here.
Right here.
Thank you. All right, comments from the press? See no one, comments from the public? See no one come into the mic? Comments from the council? Nancy?
The other thing I wanna say, we're not gonna have our meeting until after Fourth of July. So I wanna wish everyone a Fourth of July and hopefully we'll see you at the Rotary Breakfast. If, I'm not sure who's gonna, you gonna be there, Tom?
Uh, might be, did they ask us to come help or?
Oh, yeah, well. Best, yeah.
At the interview, I think is, I don't know, it was here.
Well, I think, do they have to ask us to? Anyway.
I'd be happy to help, but I hadn't heard anything. I guess that was one of the two meetings I missed, so.
Okay. No, they didn't specifically ask, but I know that it's sort of a, a constant. Anyway, hopefully we'll see you at the breakfast, whoever might be working at, who knows?
Well, Andy and I.
And also remember the thirtieth is the Alzheimer hot dog. I'm sorry, you have the Alzheimer's. What time does it start, seven AM?
No, eleven to seven, I believe.
Eleven to seven.
If you want, if you wanna set up.
Hot dog to seven AM.
Oh, you can go there the day before, the day before.
That's correct.
Right?
That's right.
And I don't know what time that was, but the day before he was looking for.
So we'll be saying, there'll be a couple of days that, you know, we'll see the community before the next time we have a meeting. So enjoy the Fourth of July.
And Bob Bergen did make a point. He visited me yesterday and he made a point saying that volunteers, he hasn't, you know, it's done. He doesn't need any more volunteers, he said. Usually he's always saying, yeah, bring them up, but he's saying he's, he's got enough volunteers now, um, with, with everything. Nancy, you can talk more, I know you're on the, he's one of his board members kinda deal. And that, uh, he's looking forward to having another successful event. He has three thousand hot dogs, so get out there and eat them.
Very good. Barbara?
Yeah, I just want to, uh, wish Merrimack High School's class of two thousand twenty-two a very happy graduation and congratulations, people. Good job.
Very good. Nancy?
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to update, uh, the council and the public. Uh, last week, Representative Rosemarie Rung, citizen advocate, um, and Merrimack Citizens for Clean Water, co-founder Lorian Allen. And I attended the third annual National PFAS Conference in Wilmington, North Carolina. Um, there were about three hundred and fifty attendees there comprised primarily of citizen advocates, academics, um, federal government agencies, scientists, researchers, et cetera. Um, as many of you know, I was, I think a lot of people are sort of keeping track. Um, a huge announcement was made regarding PFAS at that conference by Radica Fox, who's the assistant administrate- administrator for the Office of Water at the EPA. Um, she announced four updated interim drinking water lifetime health advisories for PFAS, um, specifically for PFOA, PFOS, Gen X and PFBS. Um, that tightened the previous advisories by a factor of seventeen thousand. So that's a huge change in what is considered safe. Um, these health advisories, though not enforceable, provide information on contaminants that can cause human health harm and are known or suspected to occur in drinking water. Um, though New Hampshire, we have enforceable PFAS MCLs for PFOA and PFOS. Um, they're higher than what the, um, the health advisories are. Um, then, um, these new health advisories for PFOA and PFOS indicate that there is no safe level of lifetime exposure for those two, um, uh, chemicals. As the public is aware, this is important to Merrimack and our public water wells, uh, and many private wells are, are contaminated by some of these very same toxic chemicals. Um, New Hampshire DES, in response to that, um, noted that they're not taking any action related to these health advisories at this time. Um, and the EPA is right now working to set new enforceable national primary drinking water regulations. And will probably, um, publish those for PFOA and PFOS within the next year. I think it was, it was planned at the end of, uh, this year, but sometimes those deadlines change a little bit. So I just, I just think that speaks to the concern that we've had as, as a, as a, um, council for the community and, um, why. Uh, it's important that people be educated about this and, um, you know, and, and really recognize that, um, you know, the EPA is catching up to where we thought that they should be concerned. So that's it. And show up for those hot dogs, eleven to seven on Thursday, five dollars and all beef hot dogs. And, um, I think there's even gonna be a drive-through line. So if people don't even wanna get out of their car, they can just drive through. So hope to see you all there.
Thank you, Nancy.
My understanding was Bob said the governor was gonna be coming to sign one of his bills.
My understanding was Bob said the governor was going to be coming to sign one of his bills at that time. Any idea what time that would be?
Noon.
Noon?
Noon. I was told to be there at noon.
Plus or minus? Okay.
Yeah, he's going to be there around noon, from what I heard.
And the Fourth of July parade, is there any, is there anything that the council needs to do with that? Or does, do they need any help or efforts or?
Just enjoy it right now. Matt is, uh, Matt's got.
I have in the past, but.
Yeah, Matt, Matt actually has, um, I met Matt today and talked to him. I had a meeting with Matt, I should say, today. And he's, he's set, he's, uh, he starts day camp next, on Monday. So I think, uh, I think his focus was on Monday's day camp more so than Fourth of July a week later. Um, so, um, but he said right now, he's just waiting for people to come in. Um, just so everybody's aware, uh, politicians, it's a big political year this year with a lot of contested races at the federal level. And then some of the, uh, state, local reps are going to be walking. So, uh, if, the way he does things is, um, it's by seated. So for instance, if Senator Shaheen was walking in the parade this year, she'd be allowed to walk up front by herself, but people would have to be in the back. Kind of to respect for the sitting US senators and the city. If, if Governor Sununu shows up, he would be in the front as well. And then as he goes in the back, it's for local reps, it's who's ever in, in Washington. Uh, not Washington, who's ever in the governor's office. So if a Republican's in the governor's office, which there is now, they were, those, those state reps would be in front, the Democrats would be back. If it was a Democrat in the governor's office, the Democrats would be up front, the Republicans would be behind them. And just so people aren't saying that we're willy-nilly picking and placing people, we're not. It's, there's a process that we go through and it's been very thought out and very respectful of which party goes where in the parade and, and where they, where they are located in the parade. So we're not trying to favor one party over the other or one candidate over the other. This is the way it's been the years and that's how we move forward, so. But to answer your question, um, right now, he says he has, he has everything that he needs. Um, stay tuned, if I, I'll text you if he needs help or if something comes up. But, uh, right, for right now, just enjoy the parade and enjoy the Fourth of July and the fireworks. Uh, we put more money into the fireworks this year, so hopefully it's a, a nice show.
And there's, there's no, um, midway or anything like that?
No midway this year or the Rotary?
No music, no?
Uh, there's, there is actually, like I said, there's going to be a band starting at seven o'clock at the high school, but there's no midway. Uh, the Rotary has decided not to, not to do that for, for the town this year. Um, it really, since COVID, it hasn't come back yet. Uh, but they are, we do have a DJ that is going to be down at the high school playing some music. And we're looking at maybe a food truck or two, depending on, uh, um, who, who requests being down there. Maybe an ice cream truck or, you know, a fried dough truck. We're trying to get a couple of those vendors, but once again, it's their Fourth of July too, so some of them don't want to, you know, give up a, a night with their, a day with their families, so. But we're trying to get that stuff for the town.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Happy Independence Day.
Happy Independence Day, absolutely.
There's, um, nothing further?
Happy Fourth of July, everyone. I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Lon, second by Barbara. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody, seven, zero, zero.
Thank you.